All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Troutdale Planning Commission for Wednesday, January 20th, 2021. And if we could have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Whitren? He will not be here this evening. Commissioner Wadilla?
Here.
Commissioner Mamoné?
Yeah.
Commissioner Prickett?
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Will not be here this evening.
Commissioner Allen?
I think he was saying here, he just connected in.
Yep, we got him. And Chair Stephenson?
Here. Okay, at this time, I'd like to have us do pledge allegiance. And Commissioner Wadilla will be leaving this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is the land of our own. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Not seeing any public here. Is there anyone who has called in for comments, please?
Mr. Chair, I believe I saw maybe they dropped, I think either Counselor White or maybe Diane White might have joined briefly and come back in, but I think they were interested in the topic tonight and didn't have anything, not on the agenda.
And the next order of business is the appointment of Mr. Rich Allen to the Planning Commission. And welcome.
Thank you. Sorry, I was on mute when I was saying here earlier. I'll get the hang of it.
It's baptism by fire. It's a 194-page document right out of the gate. We are very excited to have you joining us.
Oh, thank you.
And, no, do you have any comments before we get going?
Oh, I've attended your meeting before, great group of people. I appreciate working with you and appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. And one thing I'll just do quickly is the city council passed an ordinance and changed the terms of all the committees and commissioners and things. And so what I want to just tell everybody quickly is when your term now ends. Okay, and we'll start with Commissioner Whitren. He ends on June 30th, 2021. Mr. Wadilla, 6/23. So June 30th, 2023. And Commissioner Mamoné, June 30th, 2021. And Commissioner Prickett, June 30th, 2023. Commissioner Wilcox, June 30th, 2023. And myself is June 30th, 2024. And Commissioner Allen is June 30th, 2024. Okay? So all the terms now end in June. So just like that, you've got a whole another six months after. Isn't that kind of cool? All right. And with that, we'll go into tonight's items. And the first one is the bylaw movement for discussion. And this is something that we took up last month, had a discussion on the possibility of moving the monthly meeting dates to accommodate staff and the city council. And any discussion on the side?
Chair, just for one quick benefit for the commission, so they all hear it together. The Parks Advisory Committee voted last week to move their meeting date to the third Wednesday, provided that you folks decide to move it to the second Wednesday. So your influence has spread and Parks Advisory Committee saw the wisdom in it. So they just wanted us to pass that along to you folks as well, that is just a natural flip if you want to move forward with it. And again, the benefit for you folks is it keeps it on at least the same day of the week what you've always had expected, just a different time period of the month. The other note to make, too, and we'll talk about it here in the next line item, we are expecting a very busy 2021 for you all, and there are some expectations potentially. You may have up to two meetings a month. Usually, or historically, when you've had two meetings a month, we usually aim for the fourth week, oftentimes the Wednesday. If not, at least on the fourth week. To have it, that gives you just a little bit of a breather between meetings than to have that. So you'd be regularly on the second and then filler on the fourth week.
Okay. And I know this did help council a little bit. I did happen to notice that council's already canceled a meeting this year.
Well, I believe we have a counselor on the call in case he wants to comment on that, but I'm not going to.
Okay, any discussion on this, commissioners? Okay, everybody good with moving to the second Wednesday? Right, all right.
Oh, just, sorry, Mr. Chair, one clarification, too. This would go into effect for your March meeting. Your February meeting would remain on the third Wednesday. So this would be effective for your March meeting, going from St. Patrick's Day now to March 10th. So March 17th to March 10th would be the date of your first schedule.
Okay, so this would go into effect in March?
Yes.
If you put this into effect in February, you'll be a week early. You might want to put that in your calendar. And so we will need to have a formal action to...
Yeah, you will need to take public comments, too.
Yeah, to amend this.
And before you do that, in Section 7, where you have the change of address, it's not reflected in Page 3 of Section 7, where it still shows us meeting item 1 of Forest Southeast Kibbling.
Yes, that was an editor's note that we had to just update our address. So thank you for catching that.
So we amending that on 3?
That is also amended with the Section 7 and then Page, yeah, Page 3, Item A, and then the other.
Or Sex Place. Just a little bit of flexibility.
Exactly. But we haven't met there for at least, what, nine years? So we wanted to make sure we got it in there.
Or you can always go back home. All right. Any other recommendations? No?
Mr. Chair, just to clearly understand the changes. So February is still going to be the first Wednesday of the month, correct?
Correct.
And starting with March, we're switching to the second.
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Would entertain a motion to approve the proposed amendment to the Planning Commission bylaws?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I move that we approve the bylaws as amended?
The second?
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the bylaw amendments to the Troutdale Planning Commission as presented. Okay, any discussion? Okay. Ms. Chappellford?
Commissioner Wadilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamoné?
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes. Okay. Now, let's talk about stay patients today. The docket.
The docket. All right, folks, as I've just mentioned earlier, you do have, we are expecting a pretty big workload for you all in 2021. I don't want to intimidate you, but there is a lot of work to be done. One of the items that I was hoping to have clarity on tonight for you, I don't unfortunately for the purposes of this meeting, but may emerge prior to your next meeting, and I will certainly inform you by email and follow up a call in case need be, is a need to have another three-city Planning Commission meeting with Fairview and Wood Village to review the suggested, and I stress suggested, not mandated, but the suggested potential amendments to the code to incorporate some of the Halsey Street work, the code audit work that has been done. Our intention, much like what we did with the Town Center Plan, is we would give you a draft of this document well in advance, along with some notes or some memoranda letting you know kind of what this is and what it's there for. We haven't been able to secure that meeting date. It is likely to be the second or third week of February. When I have that date secured, which I think I'll have tomorrow, I will let you all know, and we'll have a packet ready to go for you all the minute we receive it. It will not be one of the things you get the package the week before. You'll have several weeks to chew on it. That is probably the big one. That's at least kind of up in the air. What I want to stress again is this is information sharing. This is not a formal text amendment at this point. So it's just information that they've done in fulfillment of a grant that the three cities have received. We can take it or leave it. There is some good information in there from our estimation. There may be some things that may not be right for Troutdale, though. So that's perfectly fine, too. That's kind of where you folks come in to help make sense of it. But that'll be coming up in February. Date to be determined, but look for mid-February and look for information, maybe as soon as the end of the week, if not early next week from us on that.
I was going to say, I know that the last three-city meeting that we had was hosted by Fairview, and the consultant said at that time that they were going to come back with model code was the next step.
Yep.
And I know a lot of people, I know some from the other cities, too, were like, this seems like kind of a big leap.
Well, it's model code, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be adopted code. What they're basically, what they would be doing here is just saying, if you wish to amend your code, here is copy-paste code that you can take, either wholly, or you can modify it to whatever you may wish to do on your timeline. So I want to stress that, just because Troutdale has participated in this effort does not force us into adopt anything that we may not want to adopt. So the information would be presented as a model code, but unlike a model code, say, from DLCD or from the state, there's not a ticking time bomb as far as we must have to adopt this code the way it's written by the state. This is basically just a deliverable that the consultant is giving us, saying, hey, in our estimation, based on our feedback, based on our review and analysis, these are some suggestions that you can take into your code. Take it or leave it. That's basically it.
So I guess, you know, they're going to present some model code, and would the next step be that maybe we have a work session on this model code, and then maybe at some point, the three cities reconvene to discuss it as a group?
You could reconvene if the three cities, I believe, too, and actually for Counselor's White's benefit, I don't know if he's heard from his perspective, because I know he represents Troutdale on the Halsey Committee, the H C3 Committee. My understanding is in addition to the Planning Commission meeting, there is, I believe, a proposal to have the city councils themselves meet, but I have not heard a date or time for when that happens. Again, this is not saying that the cities have to act at the same time to implement a code. This is information that the cities are getting in each of their respective codes, but some of the code solutions are very specific to each city, and then there might be others that are more universal that could be potentially interpreted for the entire corridor. But we still have local control over what's how and when we would want to adopt this code, if we wanted to even take it up.
Well, and I, I'm just speaking for myself, of course, speaking for the other commissioners, but I know that when we did this the last time, it was like they did a presentation and their next step was to go to council. And it sounds like this is their step again, where it's not like something's really been, you know, gone through the process effectively through planning, it just pitched off the planning and then goes to council.
Well, I think there is a council presentation, and certainly I don't think they're trying to get around what... Their end goal is not that we have to change our code. Their end goal is they are giving us information that we as a Planning Commission, or you as a Planning Commission, or you as a city council, whoever their audience is, has the information upfront. Because part of their deliverable was we have to present this information to Planning Commission and to City Council. The city secures these funds, that time, and in some cases, city resources or dollars, and in the other cities' case, were committed to overseeing, reviewing some of this work. Here's the results of your participation.
Okay.
If that makes sense. So to your earlier question, you know, when would we take this back up again? I think that's largely driven by the calendar and frankly, our own priorities. If the Planning Commission and the City Council use the work that they have done as important and needing to be adopted sooner than later, that's fine. But this is not a mandate like it is with the House bill or whatever, where we have to do it by X date. So I just want to be very clear on what this is. This is a deliverable, from a grant application project. We can take it or leave it, and we're just going to get the information presented at the same time, because that's just the most efficient way to provide it.
And I understand, I'm just saying, it just maybe could be done a little more collaboratively? Just a suggestion. I'm not the only one that kind of felt that it just got on the fast track to council. Some other cities felt that.
I would agree with that.
And I don't know if anybody else has any comments?
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I think we're obligated to take a hard look at what's in there.
Rather than stamping?
Yes.
Yeah, and by hearing it, you're not necessarily endorsing it.
No, and I'm not saying don't hear it. I'm just saying it's kind of like, these guys really like to jump right to council. And I understand that's who's writing the checks, but sometimes you've got to stop the kid's table first.
I think Counselor Lance got a good chuckle with that. I think she joined the meeting, too.
Okay.
So that is coming up on February. So even though we won't have a local, correct me if I'm wrong, Amber, I don't believe we have any local hearing for any land use application for February. Still will be busy in February.
In fact, we don't have any.
Right. Another thing that's going to be on the horizon will be a likely text amendment and MAP amendment application, which was discussed at yesterday's Urban Renewal Agency Board meeting. You should know that there will be several steps to this, but what the decision was last night is that the URA Board, which is basically the city council acting as the urban renewal agency for the city of Troutdale, directed staff to begin preparation for a new MAP amendment, or basically a new MAP amendment and a writing of a new zoning district for the confluence site, for the properties within the urban renewal area controlled by the city of Troutdale. This is going to take a little bit of time to do, and that's fine. It should, because this is an important property, and we only get one chance to do it right. And what's unique about this situation is that the city is the owner of the property. The city is also the determining factor on approving it. So there will be opportunities to workshop this, and I'm sure Counselor White or Counselor Lance want to elaborate from their perspective about what they're hoping to see now is the time, but I believe and hopefully we're capturing it right, is staff is going to provide some initial work. We're going to give it back to the city council at their meeting at the end of February, if I have that correct. Ideally, it would be in line with a Town Center Plan presentation to City Council. So whenever that date happens, that would be the time to bring that. At which point, once we've received that initial feedback from council, we would make those, any changes that we would need to do, further engage with it, and then eventually have an application. So we think this application probably could be before Planning Commission, let's say in May. But it will be a big application. There will be presumably a chance for Planning Commission to weigh in on it prior to, but we still have to work through outreach efforts and so forth and figure that out. But that's going to be a big application. It is the creation of a new zoning district. We haven't done that in years, and there will be a lot of eyes and opinions on it, and rightfully so. So with that, I'll let anybody else provide a comment on that from you all's perspective.
Yeah, I was just going to say, this was something that was discussed at the council meeting last night, and I told them it's kind of interesting because the council is the URA Board, so they put their URA hat on and they file for the text amendment. And it comes to planning. Planning makes a recommendation that goes to council, so then they put their council hat on to vote on the application. Kind of how it works. But it is something that will have a lot of eyes on it, and frankly, is probably going to be like equal rich in some ways.
Well, hopefully without as much controversy.
Right.
Because ideally, we can encapsulate everybody, the stakeholders' visions correctly, and part of what tonight is, is actually a little bit of a reflection of that. And part of what tonight's effort is, too, is to highlight that this is one of the action items that was proposed in the Town Center Plan, was creating a new zoning district for that area. So it's actually fulfilling to a degree.
Any questions on that? Any comments from you counselors that are dialed in here? Oh, here she comes. Okay.
What, you let me speak again?
Yeah.
Yeah, I kind of listened to some of that last night, and I would have loved to have heard your feedback on what, you know, is what we currently are setting up the best way forward? Are there better ideas on how to do this? I thought about, you know, I always liked when I was Planning Commissioner, having the joint work sessions with council, but I worried that with Zoom, that's too many people to really manage. I'm not opposed to it, just a concern. And wide open for suggestions on the best way to do that.
Well, I would say you can do a work session. It's pretty hard to do with a text form. It's, you've got a little bit more scrutiny, and it's almost better to just do it and just have kind of a longer hearing. I don't know what you think, Chris, but that's kind of my, when it gets to that point.
I mean, much like it was last night, Counselor, I think it's more, you know, you guys are the applicant in a way. You kind of can set the expectation for how the staff responds. Yeah, under normal circumstances, getting the two bodies in a room together, explaining ourselves, and also having Town Center input, too, through the draft plan and maybe through members there, helps. Ideally, maybe the thing to hear tonight is at least some good structure as far as where our starting point will be. Because one thing I want to reemphasize is tonight's review of the Town Center Plan, the Town Center Plan ideally is adopted by council, maybe not in its current iteration, but ideally, it's going to be adopted by council. Therefore, that serves as your true beacon, your true guiding light for where you started from. So any additional studies or anything like that that has occurred since then, or maybe in concert with, really don't have the same thing. Tonight, we would be focusing on where do we start? How does staff start to write this? And, you know, that could be flushed out in a variety of ways. There's no one way to skin the cap here. The only thing we know is that at some point, an application has to be submitted. It starts the clock. Planning Commission gets first. Lack at it for a recommendation and council gets the final say. And even when council gets the final say, it does not necessarily confine the council or the city to a specific development proposal. It just allows the zoning to reflect ideally the community expectation, because there would still be another round of taking in proposals, evaluating them, having them go through that public process, and then selecting how and where it is developed.
And I would probably say, you know, you talk about like a work session, and you don't necessarily have to have a work session, but I think one thing that you need to do is you need to make sure that there's been enough time allocated to effectively deliberate and debate issues, and also to hear from the public. I think one of the worst things you could ever do is change somebody's city and have them feel like nobody listens to them.
Would it be possible to maybe have, I'm sure staff has heard enough of, you know, the hot issues in terms of height and types of stuff, to say, you know, what does everybody think shouldn't be in there, and then work from there?
Yeah.
The red lines?
Well, it's not really a red line. It's kind of like, I don't know if that would be a red line because it's in there.
I'd say a red line, like, please don't go into that zone.
Oh, you're talking about like specific uses that are not appropriate there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, we're actually, I think, going to talk about it a little bit later tonight, but I don't want to avoid the, dodge the question, Counselor, but I do think we're going to cover that a little bit later tonight. So if you're able to stay on, I think we're going to cover that section. It'll be... I think what we would do, where we started from, is that we've, the committee has expressed its preferences, and some of which could be effectively put into a zoning district standard, right? So whether it be a certain height allowance or a certain expectation for design or specific uses, I think we can start from there. I don't know if we have necessarily any red lines or don't go there quite yet. I think that's part of what we'll try to find out the next three months or so.
We kind of prefer to roll it in as one big grenade and just have it go off, you know?
Okay. So what I guess, what we wanted to basically give you guys full disclosure on is, there's going to be a lot of work ahead. There may be the potential, because other applications can still come in, that you still may have hearings that are, I don't want to say less important, but certainly not as impactful as maybe those two potential projects are. So I don't want to keep you guys too busy, but at the same rate, we have an expectation to do the work in the city, and you guys play a pivotal role. So just be prepared for it. It's going to be a busy, very transformative year. And we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you in advance. Okay. You ready for that, sir?
Let's go for it.
So you got the hymnal, I'm assuming? And this is quite a document. And in the fall of 2017, council passed a resolution creating the Troutdale Town Center Committee. And this was an ad hoc committee, and the charter for this committee basically was to review and update the 1998 Troutdale Town Center Plan. And that is what this group did, but I've got to tell you, they really took it kind of to a new level. There's branding in here. There's branding in here, marketing, studies, land use, possibilities, hopes, dreams. I mean, it's very comprehensive as far as the document goes. I would have to say staff, Chris Danigan in particular, did a phenomenal job on this project. This group was 21 people. And really, the only thing that all of them had in common was they're people and they love Troutdale. And other than that, they were different. And if you remember, we had two from planning, we had two from.
CAC.
CAC. And we had a variety, and then we had a lot of people from the community. So we had representatives from the development community, the Chamber of Commerce, you know, community at large. And it was quite a group and really diverse opinions. And so I guess I want to say kind of, you know, there's a lot of things in here. Was there unanimous agreement on most things? No. Was there consensus on a lot of things? Yes. Were there split decisions on some things? Yes. But at the end, you know, this is what the group has come up with. And this is some great work. But as you know, what planning has done with these documents is go through them and look at them from a planning perspective. And also too, you've got the advantage of looking at it from a prism of the development code and planning, and then also the other master plans that we looked at. Remember, we've looked at sewer, we've looked at water, we've looked at storm, you know, we've looked at, we rewrote the public facilities plan, the capital improvement plan. You know, we've done a lot of work with these. And so this is kind of, council's expecting us to kind of give this the same once over, you know, to go through this and make the recommendations. And as we know, do they take them? Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. But that's our job, is to look at this from a tactical perspective and make recommendations back to them so that they can make a better decision. And yes, at the end, there were some people that were no longer on the committee. People moved, lost their jobs, what have you, but they were all still people in the end. I think one positive thing was a lot of people that had never interacted with a particular group or individual was able to sit and listen and learn their perspective and hear them. Not necessarily because, you know, you're right and I'm wrong, but because whoa, never thought of it that way. Didn't realize that impacted this. So a lot of positive things. We have four open houses.
Yep.
We have four open houses on this project, a lot of community involvement. Sad to say, you know, as you get into this Zoom world, that piece of what we do is really lost. It's pretty hard to interact with the community the way that we normally would. And so what I was going to do was I was going to ask, you know, do you guys want to start at the beginning or do you want to get right into? We can always go and just hit 2.3, 2.4, and.
Chapter three.
And chapter three, then come back and do the executive summary if you guys want to do that. Do you guys have a preference?
I like that idea.
Two, three, two, four?
Yes.
Okay, so.
If it's all right, I'll just give a quick preview.
Yeah, absolutely.
For each section, that's okay. Yeah, so thank you for your comments. And I want to also recognize, you know, it does take a village, so appreciate your kind words to Marley, who's on the call too, and Amber through some original logistical support now in the planner role herself. They've been very supportive and instrumental too, so I want to give them to those as well. And Brenda, who also distributed packets too. So it takes a village. 2.3 and 2.4 are really the two sections in the, in the plan that are probably of most interest to you. Ideally, you've had a chance to sum through the rest of it. But 2.3 talks about what we call the physical element. And 2.4, which is where I think a lot of people typically see these types of plans and get maybe either inspired or irritated by them, and that is what we call the opportunity sites and corridors. So starting with 2.3, what we look at here is we take, we take an inventory of what do we have physically? We know we have certain things economically or sociologically, but what do we have physically to work with apart from land? We have resource-based considerations, so that's how you, you'll see those divisions. We have resource considerations, we have land use considerations, and transportation and mobility considerations, which are basically the three parts of the physical element. So that's how we divide that section up. And hopefully, it makes sense to you, but we will certainly take any, any comments and Mr. Chair, Yole back, and we'll like to do the same intro to 2.4 when we get there.
Okay. Everybody ready? So we'll start with 2.3 on page 69. So this is basically an outline of what's going on here. Is there anything? Some of you old timers, I wasn't looking at you, I was just looking.
I think he called you old Sandy, oh, Charlie.
But no, I mean, we want to make sure too that we've done it right, okay? And if we missed a step, let's, let's get that corrected along the way. Okay, so any comment on those first couple pages? Okay, so we talk about recreation and open spaces. And everybody's good with that deposition. And then we get into streets. And then we talk about scenic and historic.
One thing that, just for context, we wanted to make sure because there was some concern, and it's completely valid, when, when you're talking about future development and, and planning, we spent a lot of time and energy on new or prospective development. But we really wanted to make sure we were capturing what's already here. And that if we do grow, and how we grow, we don't mess up what we already have and like. So that's why we wanted to make sure we expanded on that section as well as the next couple ones here. And that was quite frankly, at the insistence and quite rightly of several of the committee members. So that's just another endorsement of how the committee worked and how their particular interests were manifested in this plan.
Okay, so we get to page 73, and we look at community design and architecture. So there's a lot of discussion about design standards and what those look like. And so these are some of the recommendations. And then if we get down here, second to the last paragraph, the concept of having a design review committee to evaluate future commercial or mixed-use development proposals was discussed by the committee at times. Arguments in favor suggest that a design review committee would be better equipped to evaluate and defend a zoning or zoning overlay design standards and provide a formalized approval process that leads to a predictable architecture. Arguments again suggest that it could cool development interest by adding a regulatory barrier, and that architects and developers should have some creative liberties to demonstrate how their proposals match the spirit and intent of the code. That went off. Any comments on that?
Would that lengthen the time, the amount of time a approval process for the construction and design of a new project that goes in, if that was another layer?
It could have, it could have the potential based on how it was structured, but the, the sentence there at the bottom of the page there, you know, the idea that maybe it's not, maybe it's a design committee light, where it's not holding a same decision-making ability, say, like a planning commission would or whatever. Maybe you can have them be a commenting group that would have to then fit within the existing timeframe that you have for development. And by being a committee group, they would then have an appeal right if they disagreed with the decision, say, of a staff, or they disagreed with the decision of a planning commission. But that way, it's baked into the review process, and you're not adding time, hopefully not adding expense to a, to a development application. Because I think that was always the concern, was design review committees oftentimes left to their own devices can morph into monsters where, where development then gets either discouraged or frankly, just scared off entirely. I think that was Troutdale at various times, trying to balance the desire to grow, but also trying to protect what we have. And that's a values judgment that we as staff can't come to ourselves. That has to be discussed with both of you all and ultimately by council.
So, you know, I go a little back and forth on the, where somebody has appeal rights. So it's kind of like the planning commission makes a decision, and the town center advisory board disagrees with it and appeals it. And so that kind of puts council in a tough spot because that is where the appeal would go. So council would have to rule basically against one of its volunteer groups in a situation like that. But on the other side, if you want somebody to comment and take things seriously, you kind of have to give them a set of teeth to go along with it. And so I kind of, you know, kind of play that back and forth in my head, trying to figure out what is the best way to do that. Commissioner Allen.
So I need a little insight here. Many of the people on the Planning Commission have been here for a long time and working with these types of situations. How is the design review committee different than the planning commission?
A design review committee would strictly look at exterior design. They would not look at land use, they would not have variances.
Right.
They would strictly look at materials, right? Lighting, glazing.
Architecture design.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'd be very interested in what the opinions are of the other members that have been dealing with planning issues for, for a while.
Now, this is another step in a process of an applicant in this case. It's another layer of government.
At its strictest, it could be another step. We think that there might be an intermediate way where you can bake it within the existing application you have. But it does provide, like, like the chair was saying, it does provide a layer of seriousness that that applicant can't just wing it on, on design, that they actually have to pay attention to it because somebody, some group that is vested and cares about community design in the town center is going to look at it. So take, okay, let's, let's take an example. Let's say a vacant property in downtown comes in to want to develop. And let's say on, from a zoning perspective, they check all the boxes, and normally, it's just a staff-level review. Normally, we kick that application out to Gresham Fire, to Public Works, to whoever to get feedback on that application. What we're saying is this compromise, this idea of having it but not having it be a separate hearing, allows that committee to come into that, that framework, where they're basically a commenting group, no different than Gresham Fire, no different than Public Works. And they can make a vote to, or they can make a recommendation to approve an application to staff, or, or frankly, the planning commission, or they can make a recommendation to denial it. But by the fact that they have commented on an application, that gives them the right to an appeal in case the decision goes against the way they want to do. So if they like what they're seeing, if the applicant is being sensitive to kind of the design expectation for that property, then there shouldn't be a problem, and the applicant doesn't lose any time. But if the applicant thinks they can just steamroll it in here, and it doesn't really fulfill the objectives that are outlined in this plan, or the outlines therefore embraced by the community, then somebody can throw the flag.
So the applicant then, or the developer incur additional cost?
Could, but. Could, but it, it, it. Not necessarily additional time though, because the decision is still owed by a certain time period of the applicant. That doesn't change.
It would be pretty minimal. You would have to, my guess would be you'd have to go present to this board, most likely.
It would probably have to do that, but that would probably be largely staff-driven. I mean, because the, we would take the information the applicant provides us, and no different than when you guys had the hearing.
But it wouldn't be like, it wouldn't be as involved and as time-consuming as the trip to the planning commission would be.
Right.
Well, we would hope that it's added in there.
Commissioner Allen.
So in the past, it used to be our staff, our, that used to review designs and give input.
We still do.
Is that no longer the case?
No, we still do that, still do.
This, this is kind of, I would say more along the lines of what HLC does, probably.
Yeah, this basically just, rather than, I'd say, you know, you folks may trust this staff, hopefully you do, but maybe you don't have trust in subsequent staff. But basically, this allows the community to ensure that its town center vision is being followed through. That, I think, was, was the idea. Because there were some on the committee who felt some of the development of the past 10 or 20 years, since the time of the last town center plan, was actually not in the spirit of the town center design that was thought of, you know? So I think they wanted to have some ability to help steer architecture and design considerations, but at the same time being not scaring off developers or businesses. So this is an attempt to find a happy medium somewhere.
You know, this board would make a recommendation, and that would come to planning, and there would be a staff report. And then the applicant probably would comment on this, and you would take public testimony and be like anything. You know, you may look at it and say, well, we're going to strike number seven, you know, for these reasons, and number nine, other than that, we think these are all valid issues.
But, but to be very clear about something, the. But, but to be very clear about something, the fact that this is being discussed in the town center plan doesn't mean that if the town center plan gets adopted that this will happen because a, a design review committee or board or whatever you call it still would have to be chartered by city council. What, what this, what this, um, this insert here that you've, you've been reading here is just covering that discussion that was had because there were some strong opinions on both sides of the equation. And then what you see later on in the implementation section is to consider the potential for creating it, but by passing this, this document, by passing this plan, that does not commit the city to creating that. There's still time for discussion and debate. It just says, this is important to a lot of people. Let's, let's figure it out if, if that's really worth our while. This is not what, not the battle right now that we're, we're debating.
Is this something, uh, staff feels like they have the bandwidth to handle?
Yeah, right. Well, you know, I, I think in some ways it, it can help staff, um, because staff may not feel then the pressure to try to interpret a community's interpretation of design. It's really then reflected by people who have a direct investment in it, whether they be on a committee or, or have a strong held opinion on it. So yes, time is spent, sure, but you know, time would also be spent in case the community got irritated with our decision if they didn't have any say in it. We have a lot of heartburn that way, one, one way or the other. So yeah, it's time spent, but I appreciate the question, counselor or excuse the commissioner, because you'll always be a counselor too. But, um, you know, I think, I think it cuts both ways.
Okay. I'm taking silence as a okay. All right?
Yeah, that was my muted, uh, uh, thank you.
Sure. Head nod. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now we're into adaptive reuse. And there has been a little adaptive reuse. I have to say, everybody talks about Sugar Pine, Sugar Pine's a great one, but I personally would say Edgefield is the most.
Obvious.
Wouldn't you mark? Say that's one of the best examples of adaptive reuse ever.
Yeah, I'd agree with that. Yeah. And it's just basically an endorsement saying, you know, not everything that's existing or old is bad, that there are some creative ways to keep it and keep it part of our cookie culture.
If you create it, you can somehow get like a little photo of Edgefield in.
Oh yeah, we can. The next page is also show another kind of before, after effort there, which is kind of reimagining the Handy Brothers station there.
I think I bought one of those, Rob.
Oh, really? There you go.
Okay, so I think you guys have probably seen in this one, this one, um, is probably going to be a little bit more, plus kind of banter around a little bit. Now, one of the things, you know, that we always go back and forth on is we have this ongoing fight with Metro about parking standards. And we've always been really strong on that and we push that and we, we sometimes get pushed back from the development community and I think Chris would say he always gets pushed back from the development community about it.
Not always, most, most times though, yeah.
But I will say along with that is one of the things that we have to look at too is livability. And I just think about, um, every time practically development comes in, somebody's in here talking about parking. Not enough or where is it or anything like that. Um, and so this is something that, um, it's a debate, it's probably going to go on for a while. And, um, a lot of discussion that you'll see further into the plan is going to be the possibility of apartment structure. Comment on parking?
I really don't want to comment on parking. Um, I will say elsewhere in, in the, uh, in the code, there, there was some discussion about future trends and potential for automation. I mean, we're not trying to talk about Jetsons-like things, but there are suggestions that with vehicle, autonomous vehicle developments, that the need for the most convenient parking may not always be true in the long term. That, that the ability for, um, and I think we've even seen it with COVID. Uh, we had even a situation last night with a local restaurant and another business downtown where they're fighting over the curb space because where can I conveniently park my car for two minutes to pick up my order or drop off my passengers? So we talk a lot about parking, what we don't talk about a lot and what will increasingly be becoming a topic of conversation is loading and loading spaces or short-term, like very short-term parking, five minutes or less. Where do you do it? How do you do it? And before you make major investment in parking facilities, think of the existing infrastructure you have and, you know, are you properly managing it? We think of parking as a supply issue and it's just as much as a demand issue and we have to look at it really holistically. That's really all I want to say about parking because we can see here all.
Yeah, and I think you and I always say, you know, that the challenge is, you know, Portland Metro's population's increasing by 75 a day.
Sure.
And, um, so the goal is to get from where you are now to a point where cars are less than an issue. You know, you've got more autonomous vehicles and you've just got less people on the road without everybody killing themselves in the process. So it's kind of like, how do you get from point A to point B without losing everything that's important to you in the process? Well, sir, Counselor Allen. Sir. I'm going to do that to you all the time, Chris, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't want to, um, talk too much and overtalk my welcome here. I considered a limiting, uh, economically limiting when our parking spaces fill up before our businesses do. And, uh, that's why in the past, uh, the council has tried to get additional parking by where the police station is to help out the downtown area and the future development in the urban, our renewal area.
Very good point. Okay. So since we're talking about parking and then we go into alternative transportation. So this is a problem, um, sometimes fundamentally because we're compared to areas that have light rail or a pretty robust bus system. And we have neither of those. And so that is going to be a disadvantage for us for a while because regional decisions get made that affect us and we're not at the same level as other communities are. Along that first point, equity. That's right. We'd like to have. Commissioner Prickett.
We're also a city that's divided. I mean, we have like a major trucking route basically cutting Troutdale in half. And we also have a division between the upper, the upper section, which is up south of the downtown center plan and downtown. And there's a disconnect in the community because the people that live south or up near 257th and Stark Street don't have the same amenities as the people that live closer to the downtown core area. So they're, they're less likely to go downtown if there's one, no parking and two transit, you have to wait an hour for a bus to go by. So it's inconvenient for most of the citizens of Troutdale. And it's harder for us to visualize a downtown center when we don't feel like we're part of the downtown center. Does that make sense?
A hundred percent. That, that came up multiple times throughout, throughout the town center planning effort. Um, you know, how do you create that engagement? And, you know, I don't think, I, I think we can be real with each other. I don't think adding bus service is necessarily the, the answer that you're going to have because frankly, you don't have the density really to warrant it. It's not even a good use of your tax dollars. But what can you do? What, what do you have the ability to do from a transportation or mobility perspective? And that's kind of what some of the, the things in this section tries to talk about, you know? Some people may laugh at it, but the propensity of electric bikes or scooters is for some people a ways of getting around. And while you may not, you may not scoot all your way to your job, maybe north of the freeway. If you live, say, off, um, Hensley Road, for instance, and you wanted to get downtown on some nice 73 day, maybe you take your scooter, maybe you walk, um, if you'd walk uphill. That's the other thing too, we're talking about. We have a top, topographical challenge too with our hillside. So, you know, and, and then of course the climate situations that we have, our localized climate. So we've always made that point when we've talked at a regional foundation to say, oh, just, just add density and you'll get, a pixie dust will happen and you'll get more transit serves. It, it doesn't work that way. We know that. But what can we do? What, what are some other unique aspects? So one of the, the things we had talked about or brought up was maybe the idea of golf carts as a potential example. Golf carts are vehicles, they are individual modes of transportation. They can operate on streets, not every street. You don't want to see them, of course, on 257th.
Well, not much.
No, but, but consider for a moment though, they can get 25 miles an hour. They are electric vehicles, um, and they provide a level of, of mobility to go up and down hills and can get to most places within that town center within a five-minute drive and most places within Troutdale within a 10 to 15 minute drive. So it might be laughable at first, but if you, if you think about it, it might be a potential option for folks to do that. And we, you know, usually you see them in these master plan communities, largely in Arizona or Florida or wherever, but you're starting to see suburban communities around the country starting to look into it as a potential, uh, mobility solution. Ridgefield, Washington, just north of here, uh, they have the golf cart zone in their downtown now that they just kind of launched. Communities outside the Twin Cities in Minnesota are starting to do this. And why that's potentially of interest is, um, it touches on a couple of things that Metro and the state and others like to mandate on us. Concerns about equity and climate change, uh, and, and, um, just vehicular costs. A golf cart is cheaper to operate, has zero emissions and can get people still around independently. And particularly in COVID, how many people really want to ride a bus with a bunch of people? This provides still an independent level of transportation. Is it right for Troutdale? We don't know, but it's something that we did call out, maybe worth investigating. And I think that's the kind of thing we're trying to find out is what are the solutions that are truly localized that could, could potentially work for Troutdale and not just apply one-size-fits-all solution that you would see in a lot of town center plans in the state of just wait for more bus service. It's just not going to work. We know that.
Where did most of the revenue come for, for, uh, repair of streets?
Sir?
Where did the revenue come for the improvements and surfacing of streets?
Largely from the gas tax.
Yes.
Gas tax. So if we eliminate that tax by not having motor vehicles here, how do we fix those streets?
It's a fair point. It's a fair point. At the same rate though, we have a freeway which isn't about to go anywhere. We have kind of our last, our large truck stops and we, we are seen for better or worse as a spot for refueling. So, and for a lot of people who don't live here or work here, they still come through town. I mean, we made a decision as a community several years ago to have a local fuel tax for us in Troutdale to help with our own pace and preservation program. Uh, and that, that was approved by the voters who saw potentially the wisdom. I'm not saying that you have to go down, down that same route, but sure, we've, we've got that concern of maybe declining revenue there, but we also know we have this longstanding facility that probably is not going anywhere anytime soon.
Yeah, and I would agree with you though, but a couple of years ago, when the decision was made that we needed to tax people additionally to take care of our streets, the system of all of these vehicles fueling up here wasn't getting it done.
Right.
So if there's, I guess to Mark's point is if there's less vehicles.
Yeah.
How are the streets going to get fixed completely?
Well, and again, we also have the division of 257. The people, I'm not going to want to even go to a light with a golf cart and try to turn left or right or cross 257th to get to downtown. There, I mean, getting out now, even if there was less vehicle traffic on 257th, getting out during any time after three o'clock is just horrendous getting out of my neighborhood. So I can imagine trying to get out with a golf cart. Not to say it's not a bad idea, but it's not always effective for the whole city.
No, you, yeah, you would have to have in certain pinch points, infrastructure to support it. And I don't want to dismiss that point. Infrastructure costs money. Um, the plan does talk about some ideas on that, not necessarily through the prism of golf carts, but just frankly for safer bike and pedestrian access. Precisely to your point, Commissioner Prickett, is especially west of 257th, heading out toward Edgefield along Halsey Corridor, those folks do not feel connected to downtown like they could. Even though they're close by, that road is really a huge wall for them. And how do you bridge that?
It, it is kind of interesting because we have some natural barriers, man-made barriers. And, um, between all of them, we have different sections that feel, and we found that through the town center plan.
Absolutely.
Most of them do not feel connected. And, and I was also looking in here, except for 257th, does that mean this would not work on 257th?
What are you talking about?
Your golf carts, low-speed vehicles, things like that.
Oh no, you wouldn't be operating, no, heavens no, you wouldn't be having a golf cart on 257th. No. But what, where it might be appropriate, consider Troutdale Road, for instance. Let's take it outside of the town center. You have a very, very wide street pavement there. You've got travel lanes and you have got significantly wide shoulders. And yeah, some of the shoulders are used for on-street parking, but largely they're just shoulders. Even going down Buxton Hill, if you've ever looked at the road, it is considerably a wide patch of pavement. Your, your speeds are effectively allegedly 25 miles an hour, that's top speed for, for an electric vehicle. It's, it's engineering-wise, rules of the road-wise doable. I'm not saying it's advisable. That's what we're saying is maybe it's worth studying. That's all.
Okay. I think it's interesting that we can't get bus service. I think it's interesting that we can't get bus service. Okay, 2.4.
All right. So this is what we're calling the Opportunity Sites and Corridors section. And it's broken into, well, Opportunity Sites and Corridors. The third section is also talking about the urban renewal area, or as we're referring it to increasingly now, the Confluence Site. So we'll also talk about that because that is really, of all the things that can affect the future of our town center, that property and its redevelopment is the biggest impact, without question. So what Opportunity Sites are, are basically this. They are areas that are developable or redevelopable. Or in some cases, for three of them, they are parks that put the additional potential investment that if they are developed or redeveloped or reinvested in, have transformative impacts, not just on those particular properties, but on the entire town center district itself. So these Opportunity Sites are being highlighted because the Town Center Vision talks very strongly about a small town feel. And with the level of interest and investment that we're foreseeing here in the next twenty years, you can very, very easily ruin that small town feel if you're not careful and if you're not intelligent about how and where you place your investments in and how you steer and ideally advise development interests on how they can fit in, how they blend in, how they do not overwhelm the community. So it was important for us to at least highlight them. Why you want to also highlight them from a city bottom-line perspective is you can then have a better plan on how future capital improvements can be handled to help serve those facilities. And when they can't, then you have a much clearer understanding of what a developer would have to contribute to help fund those improvements to make development occur. So we've identified on the map on page eighty-six and then in the subsequent pages, what those twelve Opportunity Sites are. And then again, the Confluence Site within the urban renewal area is a unique one. And we'll talk about that one at length. There are also eight Opportunity Corridors, but since the Opportunity Sites are the first topic here, we can certainly start there and we can dive into, I guess, any which one or however, Mr. Chair, you want to tackle these. One last thing on it. Each of these Opportunity Sites are already zoned something or already designated by our comp plan map. What this plan is saying is not that they all have to be rezoned or rededicated. That's not what we're doing and not what the plan is advising. What the plan is showing, though, is here is the situation as of 2021. Here's what the committee thinks might be a preferred development pattern or land use idea. But it will always be on the owner of the property or the buyer of the property's discretion to rezone the property. We will not, unless it's our own property, we would not intentionally rezone something without any property owner's permission. So it just communicates a community expectation, not a community mandate. Hopefully, that's quite clear.
Okay, thoughts on this? I heard somebody.
Um, question, I have a couple of questions on six, Opportunity Sites six and seven.
Yep.
Which is the four-square track and the overlooked track.
Yep.
When, somewhere I ran in here, and I could be wrong. But we really have to be careful with these two tracks because it's on a major thoroughfare and you don't want to make it look like you're driving into a tunnel and there's a giant wall on either side. So height limit might be a little more suggested for these two sites so that they're not so, like I say, they don't stick out like a sore thumb. And then obscure the thought that Troutdale, you know, we see the arch for Troutdale, but then you have this big building before you get there or large structure, whatever. But just to be aware that we have to be, like you said, be really careful so we get it right the first time.
Sure. So what is not, thank you, Commissioner, I agree, particularly on Site Seven, because that's really more in line with that. But as you're heading up 257 to the light, you can really see it there. We, you can even see it, and I think we show it in the plan elsewhere. Even coming down Halsey Street, you'll see a visual impact on there. So we're going to be mindful of that. On Opportunity Site Six, real quick before I get to you, Commissioner Allen, sorry. Opportunity Site Six is actually pending for redevelopment now. And I can now say that Opportunity Site Six is expected to be a food cart pod, a permanent food cart pod along the lines of the Happy Valley Station Food Cart Pod, which has been quite popular. I don't know if people have heard of it. But it's effectively going to be, I believe, a twenty-five or thirty-foot-tall building there that steps back a little bit from the property where it's basically an interior covered dining hall with food carts that are around the side of it. It is a really high-end, sophisticated food cart pod. This is not a gravel lot in Portland where a bunch of carts are slammed together. And this application has come in just in the past couple of days. It's a food and beverage thing. So we are expecting development of Site Six to be occurring here this year. And that, again, we didn't update the council on it last week because, again, we didn't have the application. We just got it on Friday. But...
It's good, good to have somebody starting your car.
What's that? Yeah. But as you can see, Site Six, on page one oh four, food cart pod was one of the ideas that came out of the community engagement effort. So this is, even though this is in draft form, this kind of helps express the interest to prospective buyers as far as what was potentially possible there. And again, with that, the visual impact, I think, is not going to be, you know, four- or five-story buildings or anything like that.
Commissioner Allen?
Sure.
I was just going to ask, are we going to go through these one at a time?
Which ones one at a time?
The Opportunities.
These 2.4 Opportunity Sites and Corridors.
Yeah, we're kind of doing the overview.
Okay, so should I wait till we get to particular sections?
Um, yeah. So I will tell you, I personally have wrestled with funding development on particular sites. Now, that's been a tough one for me to come around to. But I think in some cases, it's necessary. But I think, you know, we have to just be careful because we're kind of dictating where taxpayer money may be spent.
Well, it is also important that when development does occur, you know, a lot of times, public improvements and then some development charges are typically applied to such development, too. So, you know, development also has a responsibility to the taxpayers as well. They contribute beyond just what they're building.
Well, no, I guess what I'm saying is if you're funding something, right, the money comes from somewhere.
Sure.
So like, where does it come from?
Right.
That's all. So this was some suggestions when we get into page eighty-eight, that are suggestions that could be done with possibilities for what could be done with some of these sites.
Right. And to be clear, because I know this will come up, even though preferences are listed, that is not necessarily a binding situation. If the town center plan gets approved, it doesn't, you know, if, like, let's say on, actually, the four-square one is a perfect example here, like Site Six. The three preferences indicated were community service use, commercial office, and mixed use. And yet, we're going to have a commercial development on there. So it's an example that, sure, we can express an expectation, but sometimes market conditions or interest should be still evaluated on a case-by-case basis. This is just kind of trying to set a framework for how the community largely thought about it at a moment in time. That, so, you know, so something that maybe open space potentially could be mixed use one day or, you know, depending on certain circumstances. So that can always be changed or amended or evaluated on a case-by-case basis. Again, this list is not designed to immediately rezone or take away vested rights or development rights from anybody. What it is saying is that in overlooking this whole area and considering everything, here's what we thought or here's what the committee thought at the time might be highest and best. But that can change.
Okay, so let's go through these. Site one is Depot Park. Comments on that? Now, if you look at ninety-two, you can kind of see a rendering of what that could look like. Or what it was supposed to look like when it got approved years ago. Ninety-three is more rendering. Okay, and then we move on to Site Two. And this would be the old potato warehouse. Any comments? No? Okay. Number three, the Herford Track. And this is one that was, frankly, discussed quite a bit. Because this is involved in Halsey Streets and this was involved in Town Center. So this one has been talked about quite a bit.
Commissioner Allen has his...
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Allen.
Well, for disclosure, as a counselor, I was an advocate for the development of this site, including the buildup on the north end of the property. And I would agree with the recommendations of seeing if we can reduce right-of-way unless somebody has a good reason not to.
See, we can get right-of-way from the county, I mean?
Yeah, it's got a, it's, so it's a nice corner. It is flat. And, but it's got huge encroachment of right-of-way. And I would also like to see that reduced if it can be. But maybe I need to know more about what its purpose is for.
We've had some very, very initial conversations with the county that they understand, too, it's more right-of-way than they ever need it, quite frankly. So again, kind of like you were saying, depending on the future use of the property, they would be at least willing to entertain that conversation. Yeah. Which is a nice departure. Usually, the county wants more right-of-way from people at the expense of development. In this case, they might be willing to give.
That's good to hear.
And so one of the big discussions, you say no on this, is height. But we'll talk about that. Okay, any of the comments on that one? But you can see some of the renderings, you know, of what possibly could be done with that site. And I want to point out at the bottom, first, I personally like the top photo on ninety-nine.
Okay.
But on the bottom one, this would be a view from a rooftop patio of that building.
Miss on the Herford property?
Yeah. The four-story?
Uh, this actually is from a three-story. A four- or five-story would actually, you know, same view, but you...
So this is the top of the building if it was three stories.
Yeah.
And that's the building on page ninety-eight.
Ninety-nine.
Basically, taking the idea on page ninety-eight and applying it to ninety-nine. Where you see those umbrellas on the rooftop there.
It's a major intersection and there's no parking in the background because of the steep slope to the railroad. So where would the parking be?
This would presume that parking is actually behind the building, kind of like a long strip. Or the building would be kind of a L shape or a J shape and kind of cover the back. So the parking would be access further down West Palomar Highway and closer to where the Halsey intersection is, and it would be rear parking.
But it'd be a good civic use. Because there's a lot of things that'd be hard to do there.
Yeah, but we want to keep as much on the tax roll as we can to the property.
Okay, anything else on that one? Boy, you guys are too easy. Okay, number four, Sarita's Track. And between Halsey and the highway.
Yep.
I guess it's kind of interesting because it's got, you know, residential, right, around it. Well, commercial on the one side, but it's got residential.
It's got it certainly on the south and to the west. The north is partially residential and then partly industrial. There's a big town lot for... And right now, the way it's known is mixed office housing. So it's kind of seen already as kind of a blended residential transitioning to commercial property.
So here's a loaded question, why is it an opportunity site?
It's probably the easiest property in the city to develop, quite frankly. Um, and we get a lot of inquiries about it. Ask, how do we get in touch with the family? We provide the contact information, but, um, the family, at least to our knowledge, has not indicated a willingness to want to sell the property. And that's well within their right, but it is a supremely easy, flat property to develop, that has double frontage. And, uh, is a good transition between the residential areas there to the west, and kind of maybe more commercial opportunities to the east.
So here's, so loaded question, I mean, would the city invest in this, and if so, why?
I don't think the city necessarily would invest in it. I think what we were trying to just say is that it has potential for, i- if you were looking at it from a residential perspective. And let's say you were really looking more at middle housing. And we, you know, one of the things that has come up elsewhere in the plan is a desire to increase opportunities for homeownership. Kind of a stated bias that homeownership is a desired outcome. This is one of the easiest properties you can develop from a residential point of view, that can lend itself to townhomes, or narrow lot homes, or something of that nature, somewhere in between. So it's not saying the city has an investment in it, it's just saying that this is very, much like its neighbors to the west that have seen recent development, this fits in line with it. But maybe you want to look at something a little bit more dense, or maybe commercial might be appropriate. We're not here to tell you what you think, but here's at least what the community thinks.
Okay.
And the investment, if anything, honestly, would be probably just the dedication of, of a road, maybe through it, to help serve the property. But that's just like any other subdivision we have.
Right, I know, it's just when we're trying to focus, um, on possibly funding some of these, it's kind of like I'm just. Well, good. That's just me.
It's, it's not, I, I think, I think here, it's not so much the city is funding it, the city is just recognizing that you can get a good chunk of housing near downtown, uh, close by, without overwhelming downtown. You know, if you don't highlight these opportunities, the risk you run is that a single-family home, say, up the hill, up Hungry Hill from downtown, where it could be partitioned into a lot smaller lots. That's one potential housing opportunity, but that comes at the expense, maybe, of your small-town feel. So you have to, in some cases, highlight these residential infill opportunities, so you don't run into the tear-down problem that a lot of communities face. That's really why we're doing it. Not to necessarily say the city has to invest in it, just to say that if you're going to want to have investment opportunity in the city, check this out here, rather than trying to pluck away at individual lots that have contributed to our makeup and our small-town feel.
Any other comments on this one? Okay, and I think the next one's kind of the same thing, right?
Except it's, happens to be developed, and, uh, the, you know, the, the, the pounder station, the shell station there, has obviously been there a while. The ODOT facility, and I think John Polo, you probably know too, ODOT and, or, or transportation agencies in cities, oftentimes, they choose properties that the cities would rather not have them in. Um, you know, do we really need an ODOT facility coming into our downtown in that exact location? Might ODOT, therefore the state, be amenable to other ideas? And if, if so, if ODOT were to leave the site, could that site ever be redeveloped for something else? Or, you know, is there an adaptive reuse potential, potentially, with the pounder oil situation? So that's kind of why it was highlighted. But it is a prominent, visible intersection. If nothing ever happens with it, that's probably fine too, but it is certainly an opportunity, and if, if the state decides to disengage from that property, what next?
Okay, number six, the four-square track.
Which, again, as mentioned, is now in the process of, of development review. Um, there's a small portion of the property that would be, yet to be developed. Um, one idea which is shown on the bottom of one oh-five includes the potential for a, a trail or bridge connection, uh, that would, uh, connect between Halsey and maybe Second Street. Uh, that is shown there. That speaks maybe to the idea of how bike, pet, or golf carts, if you will, connections could navigate literally over two fifty-seventh, as opposed to having a surface-grade intersection.
Question?
Go ahead.
How's this going to, and, and this will probably come up later on, but when, we are only allowed so many ins and outs off of two fifty-seventh because the county owns that room, is this going to be a barrier for that piece of property?
You're talking about the, the potential for this path?
Yeah.
No, because the, 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 the second yellow line, if you see the two parallel yellow lines to where it says trail, on that image on one oh-five.
Mm-hmm.
The food cart pod development is going up to that, that bottom or southerly yellow line. That northern portion of it going from that all the way up to the existing development is kind of seen as a secondary phase. And we've been in contact with the property owner, letting her know that there's a possibility that this is in the plan, that it's something maybe we would like to explore, and she's expressed the willingness to consider it. And in her, her mind, having something like this nearby certainly benefits her property and better connects it, or integrates it with, with downtown as well.
Okay.
So she has a curb cut?
You're talking about for, for access? She has to have an access, yes. The, the county cannot prohibit her from not having an access, but the county has.
It is Monoma County.
Well, the county cannot landlocked.
I'm just saying.
They cannot landlock her. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments on this one? Oh, Commissioner Allen.
Uh, just a disclosure, that I'm a member of that church.
Okay, thank you.
The, the, full, full disclosure too, the church did sell the property, so even though it's called the four-square track, the church no longer owns it, so, you're off the hook.
It's pretty recent, isn't it?
It, it happened last month, I believe, yeah, early December.
Okay. And then. Site seven, the overlook track. This is also known as the Whitdest property. Oh, um, Commissioner Allen.
Hi, uh, yeah, this is, uh, this, uh, property has some history to it. Um, I'm not sure how much people are aware, but, um, so back in, uh, two thousand eight or before, um, we had, uh, plans for a city hall in this area, along with a new police facility. However, the, uh, police facility ended up building, being built larger than we had expected, and it took, uh, over the site for the new city hall. And so then we tried to obtain the property next to it, uh, for civic purposes, parking, to have a new city hall, uh, near our public works, uh, parking that we needed for the downtown area. And it was thought that if we had expanded into our urban reserve area, that we might potentially need a fire station on the south end of town, and on, uh, the north end of town. And that this would make a good piece of property for that. Uh, however, uh, we were outbid for the property, uh, by Monoma County. However, at that time, their use of the property was in line with, uh, part of our thoughts, which was, uh, providing expansion for the sheriff's facility. Uh, so it was not contested at that time. However, things have changed again.
Yes, they have.
Yeah, so naturally, I, I still have that hope that someday it'd be a civic area, uh, but that's just my two cents.
Well, might be civically owned. Um, Commissioner Ramoni.
Mr. Chair. Um, my, my apology, I probably, uh, I, I felt I had the responsibility to, to listen. I'm the, probably the newest member, with the exception of maybe of Commissioner Allen, but Commissioner Allen has, uh, past experience. My responsibility was to listen and to understand how the committee was functioning, was the committee was approaching this development. I, I feel I had to make some, some considerations here, because I am a little bit perplexed. Um, and I'm perplexed fundamentally how, um, this unusual path to approach an exercise like a master plan, or a downtown master plan. The, usually, a, a master plan, or even more a downtown master plan, is really start with a vision, with, with an adulterated vision, with a, with an image of future development. What would be the best, optimal solution? Um, unadulterated, with no boundary, by process of elimination, eventually, things are going to be scaled down. It's going to be in, in, from an architectural engineer's standpoint, if it's going to be from transportation limitation, it's not going to be by topography, or by fiscal financial ability, or mechanisms that are not working, like taxing and financing, for example. But, for the past hour, hour and a half, it, it seems to me we started from a completely different approach, which is totally unheard of to me. Uh, we started to impose limitation. We started to talk about, first about assumption, about administratively and judicially discharge of plan application, while we don't even know how it's going to be happening. We are not going to be, because there are going to be a design commission that's going to be administrated. Then, then we started to talk about hooters and golf carts. Um, and then we started to go to talk about individual site, which is really self-defeat the scope of a comprehensive, unadulterated visual for a comprehensive downtown master. Um, and then reusing retrofitted existing buildings.
Could you repeat what, your last sentence, I didn't catch it, I'm sorry?
I'm, I'm sorry. Can you?
Your last point, I didn't catch it.
Uh, talking about individual site, you know, this side, or that side, the site, and then about how to reuse and retrofit existing building, which is really, is, while, while it's appreciated, sometimes it does happen. But focus is solely on that, is really, um, antithetical to a new scope for a master plan, which is really, is really thinking outside the box. Is really established that an optimal solution with no limitation. And so I'm a little bit perplexed, and that's why I wanted to still really, where, where we're proceeding. Um, we're, it seems to me we are, we are treating or reducing a must, the exercise of a master plan to, to a baking recipe. Um, we are starting, we started a conversation, instead of opening completely this, this plenty of latitude, by established limitation. What, what, we're not going to be, is, is my stance, is my experience also, if we work on master plan for much larger cities, when I was director of community, uh, community and economic development. Uh, city of sixty thousand in Idaho, downtown, with nine million dollars, um, loan, um, I'm sorry, with nine million dollars from, from the, um, Corps of Engineer, uh, and DEQ and EPA. Having worked on the downtown, on, on a master plan for the Iowa State University, the largest university in America. That imposing limitation at this level, it is not going to help the conversation, is this a must, is my experience. Um, usually, traditionally, issue of future development were based of, not, not a lack of development opportunity, were, were, were based on, on, on a laissez-faire attitude. There was the consequence of, of a robust economy and, and, and bad design. But it is, it was, it was a rationale behind it. Seems like we are, we are developing a, a twenty-story, five-blocks building, and we start to discussing about the radius of the, of the baseball bullnose tile. It's still limited. I, I sense we should have, we should be thinking outside of boxes. We should be thinking, without restricting ourselves to this, this side is going to be this way, this side is going to be this way. Otherwise, we are just repeating and perpetuating the past. So I'm a little bit perplexed, I don't mean, my apologies, and I, and I mean it sincerely, I don't mean to jump on a soapbox. That's why I was patiently trying to listen where the committee, my colleagues were going. I wanted to understand, because I'm the new member, but, but it seems to me that we are going a way that is not necessarily guide us in the direction we want to go, when we create a document like this one. Um, so, my apologies, and I mean it again, um, not a sign for we spoke lately, uh, late, I, I needed to have, my responsibility was to understand better where, uh, we, we wanted to go. I'm also perplexed that we start to, already, even before we have this thought about physically, structurally, where we want to go. Then we start to already be told that the city is not going to do this, and the city is not going to do that. Uh, and I'm quoting the director, and again, this is not a criticism, Chris, Chris, as, as a responsibility to inform us, I'm perplexed again by that, because I thought the plan was brought in front of the commissioner, for deliberation, and for discussion, for conversation. If we are, again, imposing limitation, the way we can think outside the box. Then I think it limits our ability to be creative, to be successful, to create an optimal, I'm not, I'm not suggesting a perfect solution, but at least I'm not.
Okay, um, I guess I'll try and respond to that. And, um, I guess I would say, what we are charged with doing is reviewing the plan, and looking at it from a planning perspective. Okay, um, it, it is a master plan, we review master plans, and, um, right or wrong, this is what we've done. I mean, maybe there's a different approach, it's a better approach, um, I don't know, I just know this is what this is. Am, am I incorrect? Commissioner Whitefield? Um, and this is what this committee has done for many years. Um, and I don't think we're looking at bullnose tile, uh, to be honest with you. I, I don't think that. We, there is a recommendation in here for a committee to look at design. Okay, that affects this body, that's why we're talking about it. We haven't changed anything. We haven't changed anything in the document, the only thing we've done is review.
Mr. Chair, again, um, I, I, I go through great lengths to recognize that I am the newest member, so I'm adopting, I am, I'm, I'm adopting myself to the ways and means of, of the, of this, of this committee. But, again, my experience in the past, as a, as a director, uh, of community and economic development, having written this kind of, or this kind of codes for larger city, having worked in different municipalities, is that when we work at this kind of level, that, the plan is, is by effect, is, is demonstrative by. So we really have an image, we really have a vision of future development. Um, either I missed the step, because it was way, way before my time, but as we proceed right now, I see an, an analysis of individual marginal point, individual property. There is not, uh, interconnected plan, there is a retrofitting strategy about individual property, individual parcel, individual building, which, while is a noble experiment, and sometimes we are necessary to do that. But it's, again, as a starting point for a master plan, which is in absolute, thinking outside of boxes, creating a future, an image of future development, also in association with changes, as society changes, in transportation, and, and, and foresee what the major changes are going to be, seems to me reductive, and self-defeating. But, but this is, this is, again, a personal opinion, recognize, again, that I have worked on these plans, on, on city four, five times larger than this one. Um, relatively successful, not necessarily because of me. Relatively successful, not necessarily because of me, an organization behind. At a strategic partnership at local, county, state, at federal level. But by theory, again, on a planning level again, by training and my practice, by practice, I'm an architect, I'm an engineer. I'm somewhat perplexed, but again, I listen and I'll try to adapt myself and try to give support wherever I can.
Okay, so I just want to be clear, what your issue is is looking at individual properties, these opportunity tracks.
Mr. Chair, again, I don't mean to be difficult. It would be redacted to say that my issue is just to look up individual property. There is really the scope of what we are doing. Again, we have, so I would have taken a different approach, at least at the beginning. And then, as I said before, because usually that's the approach. You think outside the boxes, you have a vision, an image of future development. And then by process of elimination.
Yeah. Mr. Ramoni, there is a vision for this whole town center plan. It's on the first page. By 2040, the Troutville Town Center will preserve its small-town feel while becoming the most vibrant scenic and historic hub in the region where families thrive, businesses prosper, and visitors return. Even though we haven't talked about it tonight, that is the fundamental building block that this entire plan is built on, is built on a vision that is forward and future-thinking.
Chris, I understand, I understand.
Let me finish, please. The reason we're focusing on these opportunity sites is precisely because of this vision because if we just kept it in broad terminologies, the very real fear is that the community just effectively broadcasts itself for development interest opportunity and risks losing the very things that people held true and helped to form the plan. So our approach was to try to encourage or at least highlight development possibilities within the town center where people could grow or development opportunity could occur. And we don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. That's why we spent the time. That was a decision made by the committee, whether we agree with it or not. That was the direction that the committee wanted to go and the wisdom that they saw to move forward on it. I know there are a lot of ways you can handle master planning and that's fine. But this is the way we, the committee moved forward with it. So I make no apologies for how we structured, with all due respect.
And I was going to say, and we're tasked with reviewing the plan and making a recommendation to council. That's our charge. Yeah.
Very well then.
You would recommend basically forwarding the document as it is, correct?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, could you repeat?
You would recommend forwarding the document with, as it's drawn.
My apology, I'm not sure I understand exactly what you're saying here.
Not doing the level of review that we're doing.
Again, I'm fine. If this is the way that the review is established, if this is the way the protocol has been established, I'll work within those boundaries. I was just trying to voice my opinion and my concern. And then obviously, there is a majority that works everywhere, there is an ability for everybody to adopt. And I will, within the boundary of stopping. Again, that's not necessarily the way I would have proceeded. And while I appreciate the fact that the community has spoken a specific way, which it always does, we're always attentive to what the community thinks, we're always attentive about cultural editor to recognize that the development reflect the cultural editor. This is a primary thing. On the other end, there is a technical language that we had to translate in lame terms or in layman's terms, that has nothing to do with the community. The community has its input, but the way we establish a mechanism is not necessary by treating the plan with what we're treating right now. But if this is the way we're proceeding, I'll adopt and try to be of assistance, whatever I can to be of assistance. I was perplexed, that's why I felt I needed to say something.
No, and I appreciate your comments. We're just trying, I'm trying to make sure that we are doing what is called for in the resolution that tasked us to do this. Commissioner Allen?
I just wanted to mention real quick that even though I stepped out of you, I was listening to Commissioner Ramoni's concerns. He's on surround sound here. Twelve speakers.
Does anyone have any comments about direction, please? Mr. Wright?
For the purposes to review, let's review.
That's the direction we've been given, so we should review it and make sure we give a good recommendation to the city council.
Okay. You guys want to change anything or want to keep going the way we're going?
Keep going the way we're going.
Keep going.
Okay. The overlook track, we talked about that a little bit. This is now owned by, it's not owned by the county anymore, right? It's owned by Home Forward.
Well, to be clear, the overlook track is not just the windows property you were referring to. It's also some surrounding properties. But the middle, the larger portion of it is owned now by Home Forward, although it was previously owned by the county as Commissioner Allen had mentioned.
And the county is planning on developing it?
Home Forward is.
Home Forward, sorry, I did it again.
Yeah.
Home Forward is planning on developing it.
I will point out, there is a minority report that is tied with this track. For the interest of time, I don't want to get into it, but there were a lot of strong opinions on this track and understandably so. Commissioner Craddock raised those earlier. It is a fraught issue, we could be here all night just debating it. But we understand it is a very sensitive topic and certainly we can provide additional context offline if you so wish.
Yeah. Heavily and very emotionally debated. Okay. Site eight is the Helen Alton Park. And this would be kind of something that just is more of entities, correct?
Either that, but also maybe an increased attention to forest maintenance. There was some concern about, you know, regular forest management and the concern about future forest fire combustibility there that did come up. So again, not talking about future development or giving away civic assets, just calling it out because it could affect how the city approaches it and being mindful of it.
It's kind of underutilized now.
That was part of the other thing too. A lot of people, frankly, surprisingly, never even knew this facility existed.
I know. Okay, and then we have Mayor Square, number nine. And I think this one, some of this stuff has already gone through council. They've already approved some changes to this.
In what way, I'm sorry?
I think they've already started funding some amenities for this. I thought they had.
Don't recall, maybe Councilor White might be able to refresh my memory. I don't recall any direct ones. I know we, obviously, we have the parking lot, we have the new tree well, which was part of the parking lot. What we had heard from the community there is that, okay, it's a pretty space, it's just not utilized perhaps to its full extent. What additional amenities? You know, COVID allowed, you know, the idea of like outdoor dining that could be shared. So that came up. But the idea of even some more family-friendly type amenities like a splash pad or the return of a small market there, that came up and that's what we wanted to try to capture.
Okay, if nothing on that, we go to number 10, which is Old City Hall.
And the plan here, again, did not try to wade into the waters of another very sensitive topic, but really tried to thread the needle and said, okay, if you wish to maintain or if you wish to recreate basically what was there, here are some ideas for how you could do it. If you chose not to and you wanted to sell it, here might be some potential land use options that an investor could do there. So it was, tried to be done without any particular allegiance to selling it, maintaining it, or doing whatever with it.
Interesting thought, you know, of what could happen there. Building with a lot of character and a lot of history. Okay, and then site 11 is Beaver Street. And this would be kind of nature redevelopment.
Well, I think just calling out the idea that, you know, a lot of people see downtown or at least our town center ending at Depot Park in ways to help extend that streetscape, that feel that you're still interconnected in this whole district further down the street. And how might the built environment do it? How might, you know, improvements on the other side, whether they be a trail or a sidewalk, whatever it might be, just to help with that, knowing that you also have the creek behind you, which plus my concerns limits somewhat what you can do, but not entirely.
And you know, one of, some of the vision, you know, that the town center committee had would be like walkable, more of a walkable situation from Glen Otto to downtown out to Edgefield. And, you know, street improvements and things like that would go a long way towards that. And Peninsula.
And again, this is.
Yeah.
I have visions of Frank Grande on this one.
You know, this is, this is, would you say our worst decision? What?
I'd say it probably is one of the worst decisions that was ever made, yeah. It morphed into something totally
Different.
Different. And it took on a mind of its own.
But you, this is one where you look at it and you think about a possibility, you know, of what could happen.
And again, the preferred land use is listed there. You know, there were other ones that are out there that are as valid and have merit. So that's not to exclude them. But I think we have to be realistic that it's called Peninsula Track for a reason. It is between two waterways. And while there are definitely non-floodplain affected properties there, a good chunk of property, more so on the RV lot side, of course, is constrained. It doesn't mean you can't do things, it just means you might be somewhat limited based on financial reality as far as what you can do. That's really all we're trying to say in making that statement. Real quick to clarify on corridors, again, these are eight corridors that we've identified, several of which are county-owned, a couple that are not, where we believe that, and in this case, where you were talking about, Mr. Chair, city investment, you're probably going to see more in corridor development or supportive corridor development than in actual site development. Some of these corridors are already within our capital improvement plan, some are not. The reasons for identifying them, again, they connect the opportunity sites, they have potential to help fulfill the town center vision, and that's why we've included them in the report. Just because they're in the report does not bind the council or anybody else from deciding whether or not they want to invest or dedicate future funding toward a corridor. But it highlights, if you choose to do it, here are the ones you might look at first.
Yeah, this would be only if we were to make some recommendation, it's something that you have to, you know, keep in mind that this is going to get it into the transportation system plan, which could potentially give it the opportunity later to be funded and developed. Now, if this doesn't get into the transportation plan, it's not going to get funded.
Right.
I think I could be that one, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this could give something a possibility to happen, but without this step, it just won't.
Exactly, that's a good way to put it.
And so one is Halsey. And if you look at this mock-up on 124, is, it's a hundred-foot wide right-of-way. With one lane of traffic each way. And then you've got bike pedestrians.
Well, this is a parallel parking space and, you know. Again, what this is trying to show is basically, you saw it earlier when we were talking about the physical element. We talked about mobility and the desire that this town center should be accessible to more people. Not just to, you know, bikes that's wearing spandex, but, you know, to a 10-year-old kid who may want to ride their bike from the edge of Edgefield to downtown. How might they do it safely? Well, if you're not comfortable riding in a bike lane on the street, maybe you might be comfortable on a dedicated bike path, that could be awesome. So that's kind of what that illustration is. It's manifesting the things we heard in public outreach saying, gosh, I would love to have a community like that where I wouldn't have to worry about my kid or my senior adults getting around town uncomfortably. And these are ideas, not just in this corridor, but in other ones too, you'll see how you might accomplish that.
Does the county have, I know they have quite a bit of right-of-way, do they have that? Do they have 50 on each side, do you know?
Well, in that particular image there, they have 100 feet. Halsey is a very wide right-of-way all the way through.
Right. So they have 50 on each side?
Yeah, I think they narrowed down to 45 on each side in some parts, but largely 50.
And then we have the highway. Which that portion is county-owned. Then we have Buxton. I think mostly, I know Buxton County is Sandy.
No, every, A through E are all county roads. Sandy is a city street. Sandy, we have a long-term maintenance concern about Sandy's durability, given that it's right on the cliffside. And it has been previously studied to be potentially converted either into a one-way street or converted exclusively into a bike-ped facility. The somewhat good news about Sandy is you don't really have direct residential access onto it. You can always get, there's always a side street there. But the Converse too is, you know, in wintry conditions like what we might have early next week, that's your safe way down the hill. So whatever you do, you probably have to preserve that. But long-term, the city would be lying to the ratepayers if we didn't say that we have some serious long-term concerns. And before you think in seven figures to repair a road, are there other options out there? That's what we're saying here.
It's actually falling down the hillside, is it?
Yeah.
Commissioner Allen?
Hi. So my one comment on the Sandy Avenue is that I get real nervous about going down Buxton during the winter time. I worry that I'm just going to become a sled and slide all the way through and into the business establishments across the street, you know, in the downtown area. So I will oftentimes use this road in the winter time and in icy conditions. So I will oftentimes use this road in the winter time and in icy conditions as an alternative because it's the more gent- gentler slope-
Right.
-and I'm not taking as much risk.
Right.
But I, I don't know anything about the suitability of the road long-term. I have to leave that up to the engineers.
Okay, and then H is, um, hey, you are a, we'll call it confluence connection, basically, from Kibbling. And this is actually something the committee, uh, did, but it was on the 1998 plan as well.
Yeah, and, and here what we're talking about is strengthening the possibilities to connect downtown directly with whatever will happen on the confluence site. The, the great, the great concern, and you'll see it in the next section here that we're about to get into, is you don't want to le- leave downtown in the dust because you have something maybe new and shiny, uh, on that. And, uh, I think there's really a desire to make sure that this development is interconnected physically, uh, to downtown where possible. Uh, the problem is, you've got a railroad in between, and railroads are always known for their willingness to work with local communities and be very responsive at all times.
And, and, you know, one of the things that-
Not quite accurate, sorry.
You know, we have to connect the confluence to downtown, or, in my opinion, neither one of them is going to survive. It's going to be really critical that we help find ways to connect pedestrian, automobile, um, connections between those two areas. Like, like Chris said, you know, you've got the railroad, a major barrier, but we've got to find a way to get people between those two areas. And I think that can be one of our bigger challenges.
Well, and, and as, as our chief engineer, Travis Holden, as some of you know, has said before, always injects, anything is accomplishable if you have enough, uh, from engineering, if you have enough time and money. Um, so, I mean, these are not easy propositions. Um, so it's highlighted again in the pla- in this, so it, it can be reinforced in the capital improvement plan. And happily, at the very least, the pedestrian crossing is already in the CIP. Uh, the concern would be then having potentially a Kibbling Avenue crossing two and two, and it would have to really be studied, and fair warning, it may not happen.
Yeah.
But-
Something needs to-
Something has to happen there, and that's why those are called out for this corridor.
Whether it's a tram slingshot, you know, who knows, but, um, so, uh, Commissioner Allen?
I, I just want to say, absolutely, I'm in full agreement with what Chair Staffordson has said there, right on.
Now, if I go to the next page, which is 136, and this is something that's, that's really interesting, is you look, and in 2006, we had the urban renewal plan, right, for that site, and you look at the goals that were established by the plan in 2006. And so many of those-
Remain the same.
Remain the same.
Remain the same.
The importance of them is still the same, you know? The community hasn't changed its value there. Uh, but what we've done now, and, and I think this is huge, is the city controls the property and it's clean. It has an opportunity to get developed, and I think that's what it was lacking in the past. We had a plan that just didn't, you know, there wasn't enough behind it to, to get it there. It took vision by the council and others, you know, to get the property in the city's hands, get control of it, and then clean it up. Um, and, and this is the big one, you know? It's the urban renewal site of Confluence, which I think they came up with a really cool name. Because you've got a lot of things coming together, and I, I think that's really catchy. Rather than marketing it as an urban renewal site, they're marketing it as a confluence. It's kind of neat. Um, and so this is one, you know, this is going to be the big thing that's going to come up, is zoning for this. And it's really creating a new zone. Right?
Yeah, in part. I mean, what, what this document is trying to do here is give, give some, some ideas for zoning, but also some expectations downwind for, for development interest. Um, and I think what, what the committee did is they really saw the site for what it was, it's a unique site, it's unlike any other vacant property in Troutville. And the way it's positioned, its relationship with downtown suggests you could potentially do something at a higher magnitude, a higher scale, a higher density, without fundamentally changing things in downtown. If, if you look at page 141 for it, it's just the visual aesthetic. Yes, we're talking about potentially some, you know, taller building prototypes replacements, yes, fully acknowledge that, but at the same rate, when you take it to scale, this is a twenty-acre piece of property. A typical downtown block in Troutville is about acre in size, so you have enormous property, uh, that is also situated about thirty feet below downtown. So the visual impact, and, and I, I know, uh, Councilor Lance mentioned it last, uh, last night, I believe, you know, trying to view these things from a variety of angles. The committee did a lot of that work in kind of presuming, um, how the visual impact could look from a variety of angles. And I think what we're trying to do from a zoning perspective, or what the planning commission needs to do, is really just help calibrate what's appropriate, uh, knowing what could potentially, uh, come downwind. And that includes not just height or, or building size, but it also includes land uses, you know, what should go there. Um, so-
You know, it's really cool, the, the vision that's come out of this, if you think about it, it's like, how many, Commissioner Ramone talked about, you know, um, working with larger cities, and it's like, how many cities get twenty acres in the heart of their city to redevelop? Kind of a great opportunity for us. Commissioner Allen?
Uh, so with this site, you're dealing with, we were dealing with a lot of different agencies, and to just get this site cleaned up, um, was a huge win, and it took a very long time, um, just to get it clean. I did want to mention something about the building heights. Um, I'm not concerned so much as, uh, to its, uh, visual impact, I think that's minimalized by being lower. Uh, however, I would like us to look at, um, the, the fire aspect of it. So cities are, are rated, uh, have a fire rating, and that fire rating determines the cost of insurance. Um, whenever you build a building like this, you have to have ladder trucks with a tall enough ladder to reach the top. Uh, so what this would indicate is you need a ladder truck that, uh, can reach at least seventy-five feet, I believe. I'm not an expert on fire, I just hear things. Um, and then the number of seventy-five-foot buildings you have in the city will determine how many of those ladder trucks you need. So I think what one would do would be probably buy a, a hundred-foot ladder truck. I think Gresham has one, and I'm not sure how many buildings we plan on building at seventy-five feet, which may make a determination for more. Um, so I'd really like somebody from, um, from fire to weigh in on this and give their, uh, professional opinion as to what the requirements are going to, going to be. Um, if the site economically, uh, gives us enough growth and money into the city that it makes it worthwhile to improve our fire services, uh, then so be it, but it would be nice to know what we're stepping into.
It's an excellent point, and, um, one thing that, that you would have in a, in a rezoning application is we would send out the, the, um, proposal to fire and public works and a variety of agencies to provide comment on that, and I would imagine, just like you were saying, Commissioner Allen, that they would definitely look at that one. Um, from what I'm understanding though, and I could be wrong and maybe, I, I, Councilor White, are you still on the fire committee for?
Yes, yeah, um, you know, I asked about the ladder truck situation when Amazon got built in. Uh, Keith Lewis responded by saying that Gresham has the same height ladder truck as Portland, which has much larger buildings. So, uh, he, he seemed to think we were okay. As far as get, having to pay for another one, that's a new question, but I do have a meeting at the end of this month that, that I will bring that up and, and follow up with this group, if you'd like.
Yeah, if you could just ask that question, I think that'd be great.
Yeah, good, good thought, Reg.
Yeah. Just for context, I mean, tw- seventy-five was kind of used for a variety of reasons. You see on page 140, the image of the water tower was an easy visual mark on the water tower with the cross theme, so people could visualize it. Uh, lodging has come up pretty fr- or hotel use has, has come up quite frequently, and there was a desire, at least for kind of a more medium to upscale type hotel. If you're after certain particular hotel brands, usually a lot of them are minimum five stories, in some cases, minimum six. So by the, the time you hit those, those thresholds, you're looking at about a seventy-five-foot tall potential hotel building. So if you look at the concept shown on page 141 there, that Beijish building kind of on the, on the north side of the property envisions a hotel, that's a prototype from a, from a hotel company that builds these things, um, around the country, and now it could obviously be more localized architecture to reflect our, our surroundings, but, but the, the concept there is a hotel of ma- that magnitude might be appropriate for that area. You may not necessarily need seventy-five for maybe these other building blocks you see, it could be a much lower height. Um, and in some of the initial development interviews we've done, since we've shown kind of this concept and, and kind of done additional study on it, a lot of them are saying they would probably be closer to fifty, fifty-five feet in height at most, because once you get above that threshold, the cost of construction, the cost of material and the design escalates that much quicker. So, um, you might be able to pare down that number if that number's a little too scary. And it, it is a big number, I, I want to fully acknowledge it, it's a big departure.
Commissioner Allen?
I, I should mention that, um, uh, the ladder trucks come in stages, you know, so many feet, so many feet. Um, but I believe a hundred-foot ladder truck is the largest that would be required, even if your building is taller.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Gresham does have at least one of them, as far as I know.
Okay, so, um, going into basically chapter three, which is page 154, and this talks about policy and programs, um, ways to implement the plan, suggestions, and as I said before, some of these directly affect this body, and those are something that we should really, um, go into some detail on, just to make sure that, uh, that is something that, a role that we're ready to assume. So they kind of made some assumptions for us.
How are you on approach it?
I'm just wondering, do you think we have enough time to get through?
That's, that's your call, Mr. Chair?
Yeah. How you guys doing?
I'm gonna hang in for a little bit longer.
Um, what do we got, service changes?
Well, you do, but again, uh, well, while you do have a lot of action items, there are some that are specifically relevant to Planning Commission as a listed stakeholder, we can point those out in particular if you want to talk about those.
You guys, uh, you guys okay to keep going? Do you want to, uh, call it a night? I'm just looking, we're getting into this chapter here.
I would be comfortable if we, uh, had another meeting on this.
I agree with Rith, uh, with Commissioner Allen.
Okay. And so you want to stop for this evening? Okay, that's what I'm getting. Commissioner Ramone, what's your thoughts?
I, I'm fine with whatever way you decide, I'm, I, I can proceed, I can stay, uh, whatever you decide.
So, Ms. Mr. Chair, here, here would be the staff recommendation, if possible. Uh, next Wednesday was to have been a town center meeting scheduled, was to have been. Uh, but since we, and, and no fault, understand, through, you know, obviously, we're, we're having good debate and discussion, so you should have time to do it. If the planning commissioners are available next Wednesday, we can postpone the town center meeting until you have completed the work. That way, they have the full edits or comments of Planning Commission to work with for their own review. We can then reschedule the town center meeting for later in February, but that way, since you guys have it, it's relatively fresh. If you are available next week, we can pick it up, um, ne- as soon as next week, and we'll just push back Town Center Committee.
What do you guys think?
Town Center meeting next week or next month?
Next week.
Next week, at the same time?
I, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Um-
Let's do-
Meeting next week? That's a good idea.
I agree. Yeah.
I'm available.
I'm available.
Okay. Commissioner Ramone?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, that will be working, will work.
Okay. Okay, so, um, what we'd like to do is probably focus on three and the executive summary.
Focus on three and the summary, and certainly, if you, if folks have any particular edits or hard burn on any particular matter, if we have them, they can be sent to staff directly, if you'd like, and then we can kind of bring it up.
Okay.
Um, we can, we can bring that up too, but that would be the scope of your work. And actually, that provides us then an opportunity to update you on any subsequent meeting we have for the Halsey group.
Yeah. So, our assignment for next week is to go through 155 through, so through chapter three, and then the executive summary, which is one through-
Nineteen.
Pages one through nineteen, okay? And those are, um, a lot of this is groundwork, and, oh, chapter three and the executive summary are really going to be the ones that, that are the technical pieces, would you agree?
Yeah.
That affect his body.
Well, it, it affects the staff action-
Yeah.
... and it affects the direction of the city, the policy direction.
So that's where we really, on those two, really want your feedback, as far as how you think that would all fit together. Or if it doesn't fit together, what we should do. Everybody okay with that? Okay, thank you. All right.
Um, for, for our staff communications, again, welcome aboard, Commissioner Allen, glad to have you aboard officially. Uh, you, you always attend meetings as an alternate, which is not something most alternates typically done, but we appreciate, uh, your involvement and, and welcome aboard formally.
Thank you.
So obvi- yep, obviously, you, you, your next meeting will be on January 27th, we'll update the city calendars accordingly and let the Town Center know, committee know they have a little bit more of a break. Um, uh, mentioned again, we have our food cart pod project in, which is already directly affected by some of this stuff in here, uh, but that has the potential to be a really cool project. Again, uh, the comparator for it, the inspiration for it, is the same investor of it, is the Happy Valley Station Food Cart Pod, in case anybody wants to look that up, it is-
Same developer, I mean?
The same, same developer, yep. Uh, so, um, if, if it is, if it is in fact a carbon copy- Uh, so, um, if, if it is, if it is in fact a carbon copy of it, which we expect it to be, then, uh, it, it will be a good addition for the community. I think it'll be something the community will take a lot of pride with. Um, uh, the city council passed a chicken code, um, through the work of the CAC. Uh, backyard chickens are now allowed in the city with some standards in place. In case you guys get any questions on that, that was a municipal code amendment, not a development code amendment. We regulate animals through that. But in case you guys got any questions, we wanted to clarify that. Um, Amber, do you, or Marley, do you have any additions you want to make?
The municipal code on chickens? Do they realize that if you do not take care of your chickens, rats will appear?
That's the whole purpose of, of, or not the whole purpose, that was one of the motivators is, is also abatement of rats and rodents and having control on that.
Yeah.
Yep. Uh, Marley, did you have anything from your end?
There she is.
Um, and, uh, just an update for you folks, Arini, she is doing well. She's gonna be rejoining us coming off her maternity leave next week. She says to say hello to everybody.
That'll probably be a welcome addition for you guys.
Amber especially.
Yeah.
But Amber has done an outstanding job.
Yeah.
A, a, Amber, hopeful kudos to Amber. She's done a very, very excellent job in, in balancing her and Arini's responsibilities, so kudos to you.
Thanks.
She did, and she took the next step, she went and got a dog.
I know.
Yeah.
Emotional support animal.
Yeah. Okay, um, commissioners, anything for this evening? Uh, Council White?
Oh, hi, I, I had, I was having trouble logging on for public comment, but I, I'm, well, it's been the first meeting of the year, man, we just, uh, thank this group for the hard work that they do. You guys are like the unsung heroes of our town. I also like to meet the new members, in this case, I know them quite well, Rich Allen. And, um, and just report on Sandy Glance is hitting the deck running, and, uh, I think you guys deserve a lot of credit as well and, um, in preparing her, uh, for working so long with such good colleagues, and I, I think she would echo that as well, so. Things are, things are looking good, and, um, that, that's all I wanted to say. I meant to do that at the beginning of the meeting though, but thank you for indulging me.
Thank you. You came back to us there, Sandy, did you want to say something?
Yes, I was just curious, uh, when is it appropriate for me as a member of the public to speak during these meetings?
Um, typically, you know, in a situation like this, you can just chime in. You know, we don't, I mean, this is a little bit on the informal side because we're just going through the document.
Okay.
So you can just request to speak. Uh, it's really hard to just say, okay, you can speak at, you know, the first five minutes or the last ten minutes or whatever, and then not be able to comment when you're spending a couple hours on something, it's kind of hard.
I'm, I'm cool, I just, I didn't want to break the rules my first time.
No, you know the rule. Um, I, I do want to say though, I want to thank everybody for their time and diligence, and this is a tough read. I know it, but I, I especially want to acknowledge Council White and Councilor Glance for taking the time to sit through this and listen and help us, um, make the best document for the city. And I think in the end, you know, all this discussion is going to help you guys to the next level. You know, with the ability to be able to make this plan a reality and not have it something that sits on a shelf. So, thank you for taking the time to be here, we really appreciate it.
I just miss seeing you guys.
Pardon me?
I just miss seeing you guys.
I know it, we miss seeing you too.
For sure.
Um, one thing I wanted to comment on is at the east end of Troutdale Bridge, Mm-hmm. there's a rather large pothole that's becoming closer to a crater.
That's not encouraging.
Yeah, it, it should be dealt with. It's kind of a hazard.
Is it on the bridge, superstructure itself, or is it on the pavement?
It's on the pavement.
Okay.
So it's right at that area between the county and ODOT, as far as who fixes it.
That's an, that's an ODOT responsibility, we will let it back down.
Somebody should take care of it.
Okay.
It's a problem, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, if nobody else has anything, again, I just want to thank you for your time and your comments. And, um, we will, uh, I will also look at, um, how we approach this future, see if we can do a better job. And, uh, with that, we can take a motion to adjourn, if there's anything else.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion is second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, okay. We're adjourned, thank you, have a good evening, everyone.
You too.
Goodnight.
Bye, everyone, thank you, Mr. Ramone.